Go ahead, we'll call this meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everybody. We're here at the Rutland Town School Library. Today is January 13th, 2020. It's our first meeting of the new year. Here to discuss budget and a lot of other things this evening. So, we got a lot on the agenda. We'll try and roll through it as quickly as we can. First things, any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda itself?
No, I just handed out updated contract recommendations, but there's no change to the agenda.
Okay, perfect. And then we have teacher staff, community comments? Anything from the floor? The things must be going good around here. That's great.
So far, so good.
Yep. No PAC meetings, no phone calls, no emails, so that's a great thing. And moving in the next thing, I'm not sure whether we want to tweak the agenda around a touch. I know that we have finance and I see budget up there, and first, is there anybody? Marissa, do you have anything you want to get rid of quickly? Are you just here for the meeting?
Just here because I haven't been here yet this school year, so.
Alright.
Awesome.
Perfect. Is there anybody that wants to put anything quick up? Or it looks like we're all here for the duration, so I don't think we can speed through it. Are we alright starting?
Except for Louis. No, yeah, I was gonna say.
Well, that we wanted to.
Yep, and we'll take Louis first, so.
Yeah.
Good, so why don't we move into that? We'll do the finance and the FY21 budget. Louis?
So, we've discussed the budget at the last few meetings. I think at the last meeting, we were pretty close to a finalized budget. Since last meeting, I haven't really gotten any more revised numbers that would change the budget drastically. I tried to get updated Rutland City tuition numbers, which would have the biggest impact on your budget, since we send about ninety-five to a hundred students there each year. We estimated a tuition based on last year's tuition plus an increase, but they have not announced their tuition yet in Rutland City. It's going to their board tomorrow night. So, at this point, we still do have an estimate in on that. We have received announced tuitions for a lot of the other schools, and if I did update those, it would change the budget slightly, but I haven't made those updates yet just because it's not material enough to make those changes at this point because one student moving in after we approved this budget could eat all of those savings up. So, I left those in as a little bit of a contingency. It was very small. It was less than ten thousand. So, in the pack of today is the summary of changes and an updated budget. The only change in here is the update to vocational tuition. So, I wanted you to just go to the last page. I think we should concentrate on that tonight. It's information that we haven't looked at yet, and it's where our budget that we're looking at today, how it'll impact the tax rate. So, on the last page, it looks like this. If anybody doesn't have it in front of you, I do have extra copies. So, this sheet compares the budget as well as many of the other items that create the tax rate from last year to this year. Matt, do you have it? Do you have it? Okay, yep. So, total expense for the FY21, we're looking at eight million four hundred and eight thousand. Compared to last year, it's a 5.88% increase. As we discussed in the last few meetings, the majority of that increase is made up of secondary tuition. We have a larger ninth grade class going into secondary tuition than we do 12th grade graduating, which was resulting in a increase in tuition of approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. In addition to that, we know healthcare is up 12.9%. We have inflationary costs, just normal inflationary cost. We have the positions that we added last year. After the budget was approved, we added that instructional position. I think it was third grade.
A third, third grade teacher.
We added another integrationist, and then we've added some specialized supports, which flow down to, a piece of that flows down to the budget. So, that's what's resulting in the increase in total expense. Education spending, it's a calculation of your total expense minus your local revenues. Local revenues are anything other than property tax, so it could be rental income, any grants that we receive, tuition income, any surplus from prior years. Right now, that's up by 5.03%. So, our revenue, the reason why that is different than total expense, it means our revenue is up. So, we're down a little bit slightly in education spending compared to expense. Equalized pupils is pretty steady compared to last year. We're at 497.85. And this is not a final number yet. We're still waiting for final numbers from the state. It's less than, one pupil less than last year. Equalized pupils is a calculation. It's a two-year average of ADM. ADM stands for Average Daily Membership. It's a count that's taken at the beginning of the school year. It's a twenty-day count. So, they take that average ADM over two years, which would be this year and last year, and then they weight it based on the level of education. So, elementary students are worth one as far as weighting. Secondary students are worth 1.13, and then preschool students are worth .46. And then there's also some other weighting that goes into it for students that are ELL, which is English Language Learners, poverty weighting, and then there's an overall state weighting factor to get, to make the whole calculation work at statewide level. So, ed spending per equalized pupil, we're looking at sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars. That's a calculation of education spending divided by equalized pupils. That's 5.19% higher than last year. Property yield, this is a number that comes from the state. The tax commissioner gives his recommendation on December 1st. His recommendation was for 10,883. This number actually won't become final until later on in the legislative session. It's usually not until, again, the March, usually beginning sometime in April. It's usually after taxes or budgets have been approved by the voters, or at least that first vote takes place. This number is an increase over last year. As this number increases, it brings down your tax rate. So, last year's number was 10,648 dollars. It's a 2.21% increase. Like, again, as this number increases, the tax rate decreases, so you want to see this number go up. Equalized tax rate, this is a calculation of your proper, is your education spending per pupil, so the sixteen thousand five fifty-six, divided by the property yield of 10,883. So, if you take the sixteen five fifty-six divided by the 10,883, you get 1.52. So, this is your tax rate before the CLA. Right now, we're up approximately five cents. CLA stands for Common Level of Appraisal. This is a calculation that's done by the state based on home sales in your town, and it compares the sale of homes versus the assessed value of those homes. So, if this number was 100%, it means the fair market value of your home is equal to the assessed value of your home. If this number's below 100, it means the fair market value of your house is higher than the assessed value, so that means you're under assessed, and vice versa. So, if it's over 100, that means you're over assessed. So, last year, the CLA was 101, which means your homes were slightly over assessed, and that's now dropped to 99.75, which means that your homes are now under assessed. So, the fair market value of your home is rising. So, that's good for homeowners to know that your home values are rising, but as that number drops, it does increase your tax rate. And then the adjusted tax rate is, it takes your tax rate of the dollar fifty-two and applies that CLA adjustment. It doesn't have too much of an impact because it's pretty close to 100. So, your final estimated tax rate is $1.52.52, which is about a five cent increase over last year. Any questions?
Before we get into that, let me ask you just a general question. Say that this budget gets shot down by the voters, what do we have left to cut? I'm looking at probably building, maintenance, and teachers. Am I correct to make that statement, Louis?
We don't have any projects this year. I mean, we have maybe an HVAC system. There's, we've gotten that funded, but there may be some money set aside in building, maintenance. But what is there to cut on just, if that, if that were to happen?
To make any substantial changes, you'd have to look at staffing.
Staffing. Just every year, we usually have a project here, and this year, we don't have anything on the books. Am I correct?
Correct. Questions? So, in this budget, just one other comment, this budget does include using the whole surplus of 123,000 dollars. I know you're gonna discuss tonight the possible purchase of that property. So, if that, if we take that from surplus, then we would need to decrease the surplus that we're using in the budget, which would have an impact on the tax rate.
Now, in the surplus, Louis, that 25,000 that we got for the logging, is that in there?
Yes, because that was revenue from last year.
Okay.
So, that went into, that went into revenue, and then at the end of the year became surplus.
Yeah.
Now, a piece of that was put towards the baseball field.
Okay. Do you remember? That wasn't much.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand of that, so that was fifteen thousand.
Was that from the baseball? Yeah, we only, about 23,000 in the logging, if I'm not mistaken, maybe 24. We never got quite to 25. So, then we earmarked 10 for the baseball field. I never got an accounting from the baseball field. I know the fence ran about five. I don't know what we spent on the baseball. I don't think we spent 10 on the baseball field, even though we set aside 10 for it. I don't think we spent 10 out there on the baseball field.
I was just wondering how much of the, the logging we had, not earmarked yet.
Obviously, my recollection is saying like 23, 900, something like that. It was right in that neighborhood somewhere.
I can look both of those numbers up.
And this year, how are we looking? Surplus or deficit?
We were running a deficit at the beginning of the year, but we, I worked with the principal, between secondary tuition savings and savings on the HVAC project, and working with the principal on cutting certain lines, we're looking at breaking even. So, if we take the money out for the purchase of the property, it has a one penny impact, approximately.
It has a what?
Approximately a one penny impact on the tax rate.
One penny per hundred? Is that what you mean when you say one penny? So, one penny per hundred?
Per thousand, actually.
Yeah, per thousand.
Per thousand.
What's that?
Per thousand.
Per thousand. Is that right, too? That's thousand?
Yeah. I thought it was per hundred.
I always thought it was a hundred. That's just, that's the tax rate. It's the tax rate the Lister's office with the town, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I believe it is a hundred, but I could be wrong.
That's how, Louis, we had, voters had, have asked us before, so how much is that on a hundred thousand? Pre-town meeting, the last was that?
It'd be $10, I believe.
Yeah, it'd be $10.
How much?
So, any questions for Louis? We've gone over, the benefit of this, this is our third discussion on this now. We didn't have any major changes last month, but we got into the nitty-gritty of it, and then we've got the numbers where they fall in so far.
And there were only three of us, and it shouldn't be the whole board, yeah?
Yep. That was last time. It was three of us, but at the end of the day, we went through it pretty fairly, I think, last time, too. Unfortunately, I know healthcare is up, Louis, if I'm not mistaken, 12.8% this year. Is that correct? Is it 12.8, 12.9?
12.9 is what we have.
12.9% for health insurance. It was 11.8 last year, then. 11.8 last year was healthcare increase. This year's 12.9.
But I think the majority is gonna be found in special ed. That hit us hard between this year and next year.
Well, that'd be the carryover for the SU, so we definitely went up.
Oh, definitely went up, yeah, because we, you know, unbeknownst, we never know who we get in. I know there was.
We had a substantial increase.
I was gonna say it was close to 13 or 14. You don't have to say how many. It was substantial.
Fourteen, come in.
Fourteen, okay.
That's that we knew of.
Right.
And there's been more since then.
Hands are tied on that one.
Any more discussion on the budget? Otherwise, we might as well just vote, I think, at this point, unless there's any other questions, but I think it, most of it's in here is uncontrollable, so. I don't see anything else that can be cut. We looked at that last month when the three of us were here. And we're back here. We have no additions to that. We have no projects this year. We're just dealing with the increases based upon the issues, special education, healthcare. We didn't feel the wages like everybody else did. We now have that unified contract, but who's really feeling the pain of that is gonna be towns like Middletown, Spring, Wells, and Pulteney, where they, we all came onto the same salary index, and as a result, a lot of those teachers were boosted up in pay. But we're on the same index, I believe, that we used at Rutland Central, if I'm not mistaken. So, we didn't experience that here in Rutland Town. It was the new schools, and the teachers received a benefit from that. So, we're not feeling any impact from the unification of the supervisory union. Anyway, I guess I'll take a motion at this point. It is what it is.
What do you mean, a motion for?
Well, I think to approve the budget, correct?
It depends. Usually, in the past, we've always said, this is what we'll present to the townspeople on the 21st, not making it concrete until after that meeting, in case there's input from the floor. I know once they, I don't think they've ever cut it. They have added to it. So, we've never made it like final-final until after the 21st meeting, until pre, after pre-town.
We, that's what we did last year, but we have been told by the town that they need all of our information by the 17th of the town.
I was just gonna.
Right, but I mean, we can go forward. I mean, I have no problem saying this is what we believe it's gonna be, and this is what we'll do, the warning and sign the warning as, but we have in the past changed it.
See, I don't, here's my only issue with that, is I don't want to run into an issue with town notices and warnings. We're not gonna be Rutland City quite. We don't have a charter mandating that. We have a book out to the public November 15th. But if we don't do it at the January 21st meeting, we're gonna be doing the public meeting in front of the town, the pre-town meeting. We don't come back as a board then till February.
Typically, after the pre-town meeting.
I actually was gonna do this in my superintendent's report, so we'll just do part of it. The, the, I spoke with the town clerk today, Kirsten, and they would like a copy of the signed warning by January 24th.
Right.
And, you know, there's the 30-day, 40-day thing. So, the 30 days is February 2nd, which is a Sunday, so it's really January 31st. And the 40 days is January 23rd. So, that's right in the ballpark.
Well, that's why I say typically.
Forty days is the 23rd, so we have to get it the next day.
We go into pre-town with this budget, say, the way it is right now. The warning's all set. We go through the meeting with them. If nothing changes, we come back. We come back and we all sign it, and it's, it's a done deal.
Come back to where?
Well, we're still in.
Oh, you come.
Right.
You mean that night?
You just make a motion that night.
That night, correct.
So, we'll just make sure that it's on the agenda, then?
Right, right. And that way, I always just feel better because, hoping people will show up, it never works, but that they hear what's going on, because people that have a real concern with something in the town sometimes show up, and you know as well as I do, sometimes they say, no, you've got to add this. And, well, we're trying to be physically responsible with it, and we have in the past added to the budget. So, I just like them having that last-minute say. Typically, we just, after we get done with the public part of it, we just, as a board, make a motion, sign it, and it's a done deal, and they get it on the 22nd.
The only reason I raise a question about that is, is I just don't recall in the last three or four years, four years that I've been here now, I have never stayed after the meeting and signed anything, not once. So, we either did it at that meeting before, we went down there and met with the public, and then we signed off on it, because I believe that's the way we've always done it. When the meeting's over, I always chat with a few people and leave, or stay for the towns part. I've never gone back and signed anything after we've left. It's always been me with Deborah Taylor here.
So, you're not signing the warning, you're saying?
The, so, my other problem is, and the one concern that I have is, we're putting this in now, the town book.
No, the, the, the warning itself doesn't go in until after the 23rd, 24th. It doesn't have to be to them. Everything else has to be. Your letters and all of the information, all that goes.
Our budget's going there. So, Louis is gonna be taking it forward in there. It's gonna be going out to print.
The last budget. Next, the proposed budget isn't in there.
No. Oh, that's right, just existing.
Right.
Alright, so I'm.
Proposed budget goes into the report.
Yeah, your proposed budget should.
I'm just worried we're gonna miss something.
Do you have a copy of last year's book?
I have every book the past eight years.
Get that for us. That would be amazing.
Yeah, if you look at the warning, I think you'll find that it's signed the night of the pre-town.
And let me ask you a question. I guess it's important, then, Louis. Do you see anything changing? Between now and next week, next Tuesday night?
Well, that's your decision. No, I mean, if we wanted to change, if Rutland City comes back and their tuition goes down by a thousand, and you want to make that change, yeah, we can make that change, which would have a substantial impact on your budget. But that's really up to you. On the other side of the point, it could go up a thousand, so we really don't know until they announce that tuition.
And that'll be Wednesday? Isn't that the day?
That's kinda late for them.
They'll announce that tomorrow. I'll have that information Wednesday, yes.
Yeah. That's the day they have to get it into the state, right? Isn't it the 15th?
So, while we're waiting for Sarah to get the book, I'm gonna be asking tonight, when we get to the chair's report, for authority to sign the contract for the land outback. He was unwilling to move from the 35 and said, I dropped it down from, essentially what the realtor had told me, was that they had dropped it from 75 down to 35 for the land outback. It's almost 20 acres. Yes, they understand the limited use, but yet they believe there's value, and they knocked off what they believed was a lot of money for the school. So, the way I see it, 20 acres, $35,000 seems to be a big discount to us. In addition to that, I did want to mention to the town, I don't think I brought this up before, but it was about six months ago that I got a call from the landowner across the street here, Lay Adams, who mentioned that he was selling his place, which comes with eight acres across the street. And I believe the realtor was either thinking about putting it on the market, but they were somewhere between 225, 275 in that neighborhood for that acres, or for the eight acres across the street. So, I knew that that would be impossible. I couldn't think of a use for us to need eight acres in order to take that over, nor would everyone be looking for that amount of land, nor was it exactly what we needed, if we needed fields, you know, maybe parking space, but I don't see us growing to the point that we need to move across the street, but I forgot to mention that to everybody at a previous board meeting. What's that? Was it at the meeting? I think it was before.
You were probably talking.
No, I think it was before. I think, our traditional, I thought we did it here and then walked down.
We've come into the.
You have a time on that signature?
It says dated at Rutland Town, 22nd day of January 2019.
Pre-town meeting.
Which sounds like pre-town meeting.
Yep, pre-town meeting.
This year, it's the 21st.
But I've just never seen us go back after and then sign.
We signed it right at the table. I mean, I don't, can't specifically remember if we actually came back here.
I remember we always met here and then went down in the select board.
My question is for this board, because I knew it, the way you guys do things with the pre-town meeting, is we need to warn that you're having a meeting, so I'll just warn it as a special meeting, and on there will be just information about the school budget, and I will also warn on it that you're gonna have an action of approving the warning and the budget. So, that's what usually, I'll, I'll go back and look in the archives and find how it was warned previously, but I just wanted to make sure that I do the warning, and it's a special meeting.
Bless you.
Yeah, we could either warn it as a regular meeting or a special.
Well, it's a special meeting, so let's warn it as a special. That's, that's the correct, but it's not anything, because it's just a really information.
You can't really have a starting time, because the town starts at seven, and when.
Well, we should put seven on it.
I think that's what we always do, seven.
Because you don't want to put eight and have them get done at 7:30 and have to sit there and twiddle your thumbs for 30 minutes.
Exactly.
You could say seven o'clock immediately after selectments.
Yeah, and it doesn't matter because they don't come for us. They come to them, so.
They'll know, yeah.
And I did want to mention for that, too, I think I saw an email. I've just been bombarded with stuff lately, but I don't speak from a PowerPoint, PowerPoint presentation. There's no reason to put one together for me. All I need is a couple of handouts, from what I've seen from Louis, handouts out there. And I think last year, I kept it down to like 10 minutes. But anyway, study came out from Harvard, said PowerPoint distracts everybody that don't listen to the speaker, so.
I was gonna say, they usually look forward to hits.
You guys could put, they've done that before, too, but, you know, the traditional way of, up on the slide, I worked through the slide, talk about it for 30 minutes. I've not found that that's been beneficial. I'm not sure anybody's looking or listening, one or the, they're doing one or the other, and they're not doing both.
Well, one of the things that we discussed, and I think Debbie and Sarah put something together. I don't know whether you want it for the real town.
We don't have a town meeting.
We don't have a town.
It's not a town meeting, but.
No, we don't want it for that, because it's the next day they're voting. But why we usually have the PowerPoint pre-town is be, are you gonna be there? Usually, Peg TV, okay, is there. And, no, no, I'm sorry, Louis, because Peg TV is there, and they're videoing it. So, when you have the PowerPoint behind you, even if you don't use it, the people that watch Peg TV get to see it, because they don't have the handouts.
Yep, but they're gonna hear it from me.
So.
That's the way. I, I'll, because I'll read off the paper. The one Louis just went over is something that I'm gonna discuss, and I think the most important thing this year is, we have no extra spending. It's really just an increase of stuff that we can't control. So, I'm gonna discuss that. I'll discuss those numbers, but I don't like to speak off the PowerPoint. I didn't do it last year, and it actually worked out really nice.
But I'm just saying it usually runs in the background.
What would be nice, though, and we were discussing this at our last admin meeting, is Debbie and Sarah, I think, have been working on a PowerPoint more about the school. Like, this is our school, this is what we offer, and give facts about the school, and then we can have Matt go over the budget piece. But it is true that the less statistics you're throwing at people, the more they'll pay attention, but I do think people also need to know, this is what your money is buying. You know, we've got a pre-K program and pictures of the kids and all the great things they do in the school, because your PowerPoint would only be maybe like five or.
Yeah, it's up to the board. I mean, we can share it with you, and you can say yea or nay. We could just put some pictures to click through when Matt talks. You let us know what you want to do. You did share that history. They, they haven't want to see, they've said, we don't want to see that. They want to hear from you. So, it's really up to you guys what you want. There's just a couple slides.
I mean, they like to see the pictures of the kids in the school. You're right. I mean, it came from a point where superintendent talked and whatever.
Business manager, and they said, we don't want to hear it.
They want to hear from the school board. That is the only people.
And I hate to see, or say, but one of the things that happens to us, too, is that when we're after the town, we watch the room clear out.
Oh, we'll clear out. We'll have our, we'll have our, probably 15 at the most.
So, I'm gonna circle this around. I mean, my personal opinion is no, because a lot of times, we talk about this audience, and then we show up, and we got four people in the room, and I think they were very receptive last year to how I did it. And then I ask people questions, and I'll engage them, and if they have a question, we'll talk about that, so. But speaking about our school, I'm gonna pass around a picture. Someone clipped this out of an old magazine, something, and gave it to me last week. And this was the new Rutland Town School in 1967. And then the picture just came to me. I'm not sure what book it came out of, but anyway, I thought that was fantastic to see the school. Flat-roofed, and just the way it was when it was built in 1967, and the parking lot's missing. Everything's missing. We didn't have the little, you know, church kind of tower out here in the front.
Same doors, same doors.
Cafeteria is still in the same place.
Oh, my gosh, this is a big station wagon with the wood paneling.
The family truckster.
Immense difference over the years. It started with, it started with the roof, and then it went here, and then we went there, and all the different additions.
And I think one thing that we, you know, nationally, people are seeing declining enrollment. Fortunately, we're not.
We're not, no.
Yeah, so I think that's one thing that we've continued to say, is that we haven't had a declining enrollment, which is great. It's steady and on up.
You know, if you're, I'm just thinking, if the PowerPoint isn't needed or relevant at the meeting, could you just put? could you just put it on the town Facebook page, could you?
And the website, we can put it on our website, and I can put a link on Facebook and Twitter to, to check this out.
We already did it, so.
Yeah.
And maybe like with a reminder, reminder, you know.
It's important to tell your students, continue to do that.
The vote is this day.
Do it there, maybe we can do it a different way.
Uh, so some of the items we've discussed earlier, um, the lumber was twenty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Okay.
Boom.
And we have spent the full ten thousand for the baseball field.
And what was the spending on the baseball field?
Ten thousand.
On the-
Four ten thousand's been spent, I don't know if additional money's been spent. There was sixty-nine hundred and change to Pratico's, and then I see a payment of three thousand and change to the Town of Rutland.
Okay, maybe for that fill and all the stuff they used on the field and-
It's being cut off, but it looks like the Town of Rutland Highway maybe.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, and that was for the fill, they had to do that clay on the top, so I think they brought in, I don't know how many loads, but it was more than that. Alright, any other questions for Louis?
So I will prepare the budget as, as it stands right now for the town report. And then, so if we do make any changes on the twenty-first, those changes won't be reflected in the town report, unless they make, let us make any changes after that.
Typically, I don't think, I think it's the, that part and the warning that we hand in at the last minute. Because they still have plenty of time to put it in, um, as long as the rest of the information, they just don't like all the rest that we get. You know, the auditor's report and all that junk.
No, we've been in touch with them, and they've said they want it by, by the seventeenth, right? By Friday.
Well, that's, yeah, you'll be fine on the twenty-first.
Thank you.
Thank you, Louis.
Okay.
Now, not saying, when you're doing that, and you, if say the city comes in and they have got, or if there's a substantial, you can always.
So if this is a substantial change, do you want me to reflect that in here for, for the twenty-first?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. If something we're not gonna be able to avoid, then yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, for example, Rutland City coming up and cutting, I think it's more likely to increase, but I could be wrong. It could be a cut, but if something makes-
But if it's substantial increase, we also have to know that, so.
If it's a substantial increase, then I think we're gonna expect to see something like that happen, and-
Have the numbers for the kids going different places been kind of?
Different places, different schools.
Different schools. How many eighth graders were there going in ninth grade? Has that been solidified?
Yeah, but a lot of kids, especially this year, are really school shopping. They're, they've not, they have not made a decision.
Which makes a huge difference in the budget.
For our current eighth graders, a handful of them are still shopping, on where, private, public.
I mean, looking at the warrants, um, I couldn't believe we ha- how many we had in Otter Valley or Slate. And they're pretty high, not the highest, um, yeah.
Yeah.
I have some of those numbers here, if you'd like to hear them. I mean, for next year, we have ninety-five students budgeted at Rutland City. Uh, we have a total of a hundred and forty-five students budgeted for secondary. Ninety-five of them at Rutland, twenty-eight at Mill River, uh, one at Proctor, one at Otter Valley, um, one at Innsburg.
Hmm.
The rest of them are private schools and, about nineteen students at different private schools.
I've got the projections right here, nineteen.
It's quite a, quite a field. How do we pay that?
We pay the-
Two semesters or?
For private schools?
For any of them?
We pay the average, um-
Yeah, so mo- most schools bill us twice a year.
Okay.
It's, uh, once in the fall and then once in the spring. Rutland City is actually four times.
Yeah, because looking at the warrants, I'm thinking, some of them are pretty high and it's going first semester or second semester. I'm thinking, oh my god, I hope they're not that much for four.
No, no.
It's like, holy shit.
We have three students tuitioning, two, no.
Two currently.
Two current tuition students here.
Mm-hmm.
At Rutland Town, and we should have three next year.
Oh, okay, that's in here?
No, because that's, they haven't regist- they're, they have it, it's not official, but they're gonna come.
Well, then why don't we add it?
We do have revenue built into the budget.
Yeah, but only for one student.
Uh, no.
Or two.
We have two. We have two.
Sixty-seven hundred.
On the first page, it says twenty-seven thousand budgeted.
Another one. Okay. What's the difference from the first line to second? Tuition parent paid.
Yeah, that's what it is.
And then LEA.
That would be if a, a, a student that's coming here that doesn't have choi-, their town doesn't have choice, so let's say, let's say a Rutland City student wants to come to Rutland Town Elementary School. They don't have choice because they have their own elementary school, but if that parent wants to send that student here, they would have to pay themselves.
Is that that top line, the parent paid?
Yes, that's, it's at zero right now, so I think last year we had someone that was parent paid.
We had a parent that paid.
Okay.
They moved midway through the year and I notified them that they would need to pay to stay, and they did.
Okay, and then I, I noticed that, he's right, it's, um, twenty-seven thousand he's got in here. Um, K is six, another one are seven, eight?
We should have another, we should have a seventh grader next year, an additional seventh grader. But I just spoke to that family last week. So it's, I mean, they are not registered, you know, it's not official, but I would say they're coming.
So you may want to add that one in, because that's a higher tuition, right, seventh grade?
Uh, it's the same tuition, yeah. Fourteen, we, um, and actually, so this is based on last year's tuition, so we did a, we did increase the tuition to fourteen-five, so I could cha- up that up by two thousand.
Well, fourteen-five, and we have three of them coming in.
So do we want to be conservative and only budget the two, or do we?
I mean, you never know, that's why I think, we know two are coming, I do my best, I'm working on a fourth, but I know for sure this third one's gonna come.
Yeah, so we should put in the three, and then if we get the fourth, we've got a little extra.
Okay.
Oh, I, I don't make the final decision, what you guys think?
We're trying to per, you know, project revenue, and it's, when they're not registered, it's hard, you know, I'm telling you that I'm- hoping that they're coming here, but I can't guarantee it.
Every little bit helps.
I know, yeah, I would be fine with that, if you're pretty confident they're coming.
They're not registered. I'm confident they're coming, but I can't guarantee it.
I mean, it's not gonna shift this thing so monumental that it's-
Right. It may make a-
For like a half an hour debate about this.
No, 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 but it may make a de- decision as far as what we're gonna do with the land.
It might help with your-
Okay, I could add that.
Okay.
And I'll see how the, other tuitions come in.
Yeah, yeah, might help that.
Anything else? Hearing none, moving on. So I'm not gonna ignore the consent agenda the way we have done it, I'll do the director's orders, I've signed those. Anybody has any questions, they're over there with Louis. Uh, just do a quick motion to approve the director's orders as presented.
So move.
I have, uh, Lewin's making a motion, uh, second to that. Seconded by Russ, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is approval of the minutes of our December ninth, two thousand nineteen meeting. Uh, I do have one change, we still can't get it right, top of page seven. Um, other than that, um, so our second time on this one, it's just the first paragraph right at the top, uh, unfortunately regarding that invoice. Uh, it looks like it's now been switched to the payment of the, Cork Brothers invoice has been changed to three yes in favor of paying, one no, uh, to paying and one abstention. And I think it's opposite, I think it's three no, one yes, one abstention.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. I make a motion. Yeah.
Oh, it's okay.
That's okay. I'll make a motion to approve the amended minutes.
Seven, top of page seven, first paragraph.
Switch, thank you.
Yep, yeah, it's just reversed. It's just reversed. I'd look through, it looks good, any other changes, additions, deletions, comments on the meeting minutes from the last meeting?
I just made a motion to approve Corinne's.
And I seconded it.
So motion, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Just the minutes. Superintendent's report.
Okay, so, um, but the first thing I noticed, we just got back from holiday break, so there's not quite as much to report as usual. And what I really wanted to concentrate on mostly for tonight is to talk about all the dates and the times and everything for, um, the upcoming budget vote. So the petition, and I have checked this with, um, Kirsten in the Rutland Town Office. So the petitions for running for school board are done Jan- are due, sorry, January twenty-seventh. There's a three-year term open, which is Lynette's current position, and a two-year term, that's Corinne's current position. Um, the warning had, the timing on it, I already discussed this, is thirty days would be February second, which is actually Sunday, January thirty-first, because it's on a Sunday. And forty days is January twenty-third, so you guys are right in the window with your meeting on the twenty-first. And it has to be posted at each town office and each school. And did you have a third place in Rutland Town?
It's usually on the website.
Oh, well, yeah, I, I know that too, okay.
But did, did we do a community center? No, I, I went to town hall.
There has to be two places.
Just here at the school, and then that was it, and on the website?
And on the website, yeah, because we don't have the community center.
Yeah, the community center was the Cheney Hill, but-
And the only thing that I'll warn you about, because of the January twenty-third, if in the event it's a really bad day on the twenty-first, we're gonna have to probably go anyway, or have a special meeting. You, you, it's just a tight window, you only have two more days. The annual meeting is Monday, March second, and the select board goes first, and I forgot the pre-town meeting, but we've already discussed it. The vote is on March third. Um, the annual booklets are due January seventeenth, so we'll try and get everything in. A copy of, this is more for me, but a copy of the so- signed warning has to go to Susan McGee by the twenty-fourth, and to Bill Sweet on the twenty-fourth. They each need to get a copy, so.
Well, Susan can give it to Bill.
Yeah.
It's not mandatory for us.
It's no big deal. So, um, the other thing, it, the administrative work groups continue to focus on a number of topics, including procedures, for policies, budgets, proficiency-based grading. The high school principals, this is more of an FYI for you, are also looking at a common schedule or looking at ways to share classes and resources more effectively. There, there was a district management group, that's the last meeting that they've been doing for the last, what, year and a half? Um, was in December, and it focused on strategies for selling your budget, which we discussed in our administrative meeting. Um, you know, and things like, don't focus on the statistics, because, e- except for the ones like that Louis has to present, because it, it just doesn't sell, you know, people tune out, and focus on the good things that your schools are doing. That's basically the gist of it. In December, we met with area legislators, it was really well attended. The group has discussed the upcoming legislative session and topics like school construction aid. They don't really expect to go anywhere. School safety remains a concern. The lead water testing, um, Act Seventy-seven, they, they, um, believe is, there will be no changes to that. And Act Set One Seventy-three, the special ed funding. And the one thing they, they asked us quite a bit about was the Act One Sixty-six, and our feelings about having the agency of, um, human services oversee it, as well as the agency of education. I don't know if you're aware, but the pre-K programs have to answer to both the regulations of the Agency of Education for Vermont and the Agency of Health and Human Services, like DCF. So we have two sets of rules we have to abide by, and it gets really difficult sometimes.
Very difficult.
The legislators have heard us, I don't know if there'll be changes, but I sure hope so.
Mm-hmm.
And it wasn't just our district that had concerns, it's throughout the whole state.
What is Act One Seventy-three? What are they talking about that?
One Sixty-six, you mean?
No.
One Seventy-three is the special education funding.
Oh, what are they talking about that?
Um, they didn't say much about it, just that it remains to be seen how it's all gonna pan out. They didn't say a whole lot about it.
I'm just wondering why it's on there, I mean, it's like-
It was just one of the topics that came up. I mean, it, it's, sometimes it's all over the map.
Can we discuss, uh, the lead testing? Someone had asked me for the results of that, uh, a few weeks ago, and I've heard we've done it, but no one is-
Well, we actually were on the list.
Yeah, that's what I thought, we haven't been tested, that's what I thought, okay.
But we're ready to go when, when we're, uh-
It happens.
First, there was a survey that we had to do.
We did the survey.
Yeah, and then they come in and test.
Okay, and when those do come out, if someone could just send around an email, I want to see what the results look like.
Yeah, even our science teacher wanted to, the results too, he had emailed Debbie saying, you know, I want my kids to be involved in this, and what does it mean, what do they look like?
Unfortunately, I don't think the kids will be able to involve in collecting the samples, apparently. The water has to sit in the pipes for eight hours, so.
Well, they just do something with the results, you know.
Three o'clock in the morning and take the samples.
Yep.
Sure he takes them, okay. And that's interesting, because, you know, the issue here at Rutland Town, I was here when it got brought up a number of years ago, I wasn't even on the school board yet, uh, but people were worried about the pipes coming to the school. All the, the water and the sewer lines were brought in by the city of Rutland, I believe in the nineties.
Yep.
Um, and lead-based stuff stopped being used in nineteen seventy-eight. Um, so we didn't have any issues with the pipes coming into the school. I think the only question is, the pipes actually physically in the school. So what's coming in here is all nineties pipe, can't be lead, um, and it's non-hazardous, they weren't using asbestos. The question is, is what's here in the school? And I think we're pretty clean, because I think you guys can see those pipes, and I think they can tell. It's not like they're buried underneath the school and then coming up and serving everything, so I don't expect-
It was the outside, we used to have to test every year. Um, and then when we had the city come in and hook us up, um, it really cleaned up. I have never heard of a bad water test yet.
I don't expect anything, and then-
Right.
You were correct, you told me last time, um, and I remembered this from just being here and being a town resident, that we had a cluster of cancers show up at Rutland Town School.
They came down big time.
And people were beginning to think there was something wrong with the school, so this place was tested by every state agency, anybody you can think of. And I'm pretty sure they would have been looking at the water lines then, and it just came up that it was just a mathematical cluster. And there was nothing, I mean, other than the asbestos, but that's only gonna man if the-
People here, the, I mean, they tested everything, because we still had the old horse.
Yep, nineties.
Horse hide under, laying under the carpet, and they went through everything, yeah.
And, you know, asbestos is only gonna lead to mesothelioma.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so there is, and there's a special fund set up by the government to cover that, because that's the only cause of mesothelioma. Um, so anyway, so it's not asbestos, and it couldn't have been asbestos-related, because we know what that leads to. Um, so they had torn this school apart in the nineties, so in addition to the new water and the septic, or sewer system coming in here, um, I can't imagine we're gonna find anything with this water test, but nonetheless, it would still be interesting. And it's gonna be pretty close, and it will mirror what Rutland City's water is.
Yep.
Uh, because I've seen them come down through the lines and then get tested on the other side. And they're always testing everything that comes out of Rutland City, I think they have to do it on a daily basis, multiple times a day. Uh, at least once or twice a day, so anyway, I'm not anticipating anything, but people were asking me, and I think there was a rumor that it was done and it was out and we're good. And I said, no, I would have seen something. Yeah, I would have seen something.
Survey was done, yeah.
Come to me, so.
The final thing I have is, um, at our last meeting, our administrative meeting last week, we also met with Carl from the Rutland Waste Management District regarding the universal composting law. Goes into effect on July first, and it requires that all food, food scraps have to be composted. And just for everybody's information, not just schools, but at home too.
Yeah, okay, come test.
Many of our schools, but what came out in the meeting is, many of our schools already have good practice in place around food scraps. Um, and Louis did we reach out to Cassella Waste Management to inquire about food scrap removal. So, um, everybody's working on their plans for the July first start. You know, if it's, I know that Rutland Town here-
Is there anything else they could dream up that is gonna cost us more money?
You know.
It's ridiculous.
You know, in the wrong direction. But Sarah or Debbie could explain what you do presently, because you guys already-
Well, we did.
You did, oh, you, you're the ones that stopped.
We did, and it was not.
That's right, sorry, wrong school.
Yeah, we had some issues.
We had some issues.
With the company we worked with, and, yeah, so we, we-
Yeah, so we, we canceled it for a while, because we were having some issues about the kitchen.
So you're looking at pickup?
So now we're looking probably, yeah, instead, maybe to see if a, a local farmer would be interested in our pickup.
If there are any farmers out there that would like to come pick up, um, we have hundreds of pounds of food, please contact me, anytime.
Any pig farmers.
That's what I said, I just wanted to get pigs, get some pigs here.
No, no.
What are you gonna have that, that extra land?
We'll turn half of that into a pigsty.
I had some of that a few years ago, let's just get some pigs.
You ever tried to catch a pig when they break out of it?
We're adding nineteen acres out there.
No, we don't need any pigs.
I'm not gonna be in charge of that.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, Lord.
See, I know, it's like, Miss Keith Faber, I'll go out there, yeah.
But anyway, they know, everybody knows what needs to be done, and we're working on a plan, and I think our timing is good, because it's, you know, we're early in the game, so I think the earlier we get it done, the better off we are.
And we, I mean, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, we have, it's a pre-K, it's a lot of food, and it's in every classroom.
I think it's free, though, between the Cassellas.
It's not free.
I know, it really helps the kids' education, rah.
What's everyone doing at their houses? Do we have to pay more now?
Buy chickens and make it some pigs.
The, uh...
Buy your own composter throughout the backyard.
I've got coyotes, I'm not worried about it.
Yeah, I live in the sticks, I don't worry about it.
I'm just trying to shut my mouth over here, because...
So that's a good point, we should add something in the budget.
Yeah, I know, don't feed the bears.
We should, right.
Put your food out back in a big bin, it could work out fine.
That's what we're gonna do, we'll make our own compost pile.
She's got it, I think.
We'll make our own compost pile, and we'll put up some game cameras.
And Louis, you got that in there?
And the kids can study on who can...
That extra twenty-four hundred. No, but the twenty-four hundred add-on.
Exactly.
Uh, well, that's just, it's twenty dollars per barrel per pickup, so it's, depending on how many, how many totes we're gonna need, how many...
Unbelievable.
Half Cassella's pickup as opposed to farmers, or...
And we need basically a container in every single classroom. And that needs to be emptied every day, it needs to be washed every day. Because our kids, they, it's logistic nightmare, I mean, our kids eat snack. At least twice a day. So we need, I mean, I, I shared a little, you know, something that we have at our house that you can get for a discount through the Solid Waste, either in Rutland or Addison, um, they give discounts to schools.
And they will be doing informational sessions for the community, so you, so we actually offered if they wanted to come into the schools and the different community users' space, so parents could, you know, it affects us all.
Correct.
Not just the schools.
But I don't know if we need one in every single classroom, why can't we put it in, one in per area, or whatever? We're trying to show them respect, accountability.
Yeah, we have a lot of work to do.
I'm just thinking of the maintenance, trying to take a bucket out of every single classroom, bring it down every single day, clean them every single day, and bring them back.
We have to involve the kids in this. Yeah.
And, uh, Orion said it would be about...
Many schools do, and sometimes they have composting clubs.
Two hundred and fifty pounds of compost a week.
About two hundred and fifty pounds of compost a week. So again, any farmers out there that's looking, please contact me.
How many barrels is that?
I don't know how much is in...
How much is in a barrel, do you remember?
Twenty dollars a barrel.
No, but how much does it hold?
Yeah, how many cubic feet?
They're thirty-two gallons.
Thirty-two gallons.
So this is gonna start next school year?
July one.
No, but for us.
Very heavy, so I'm saying September first.
It's a lot.
And it depends, you know, who knows what the legislature will do, legislature will do between now and then.
And how much do we pay these people to come up with this?
They postponed it before. They postponed it before.
Compost, you can just use it as top dressing for the field.
Exactly, that's what I'm, I'm gonna say, just build a big compost out here.
And somebody has to maintain it, that's...
I think we can get rid of all of it, though. I do, I know a person that has pigs here, uh, and then we have another place that's doing it, so. The, um, but anyway, I don't think it'll be an issue.
I mean, if you really wanna teach them how to do it, you have a compost pile.
They probably pick it up.
We, Proctor has a pig farmer that comes pick, and picks theirs up every day.
Yep, it's just a question of how they're gonna get it on the truck, but that's their issue, not ours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well...
Okay, that's enough of that crap.
Well, let's get out of the dumps.
Working on it, I am done, that's it.
Everybody, they amazed me, every single meeting.
See how far afield we went with that, too, by the way? Could you just give us an inch, and everybody puts up, and... Beautiful principals' report.
You go. All right, so...
I feel like we just met anyways.
Have a nice picture there of our fourth graders who went to Spartan Arena for, um, skating and pizza, they had a great time. You can see they all have their helmets on, uh, all learning about safety skating, and hopefully soon they'll be skating out here at the rink out back. Um, our third grade visited Billings Farm and Museum, we had a lot of field trips in December. We had some great concert, concerts, um, the K to four concert and the five through eight concert, were really well attended, and, uh, we have some really talented students, and it's really great to see and hear what they, what they produce for us. Um, our third and fourth grader tech buddies, they actually went, uh, to the meadows and shared their talents with the residents there. Um, some of them, uh, did magic tricks, they played instruments for them, they did all kinds of things with the residents, and, uh, they, they had a really great time, it was a great experience. Um, our first grade visited Wonderfeet, our middle school band and chorus visited nursing homes for the holidays and played for them as well, which was great. Um, Sarah and I have been working on completing our, um, evaluations for our first and second year teachers, and we're just about finished with those, we have till Wednesday. And those are just about finished, and, um, we're starting to work on our mid-year MAP testing, and we'll use those results to, um, determine interventions for our students, whether students go off intervention or go on to intervention. And then our upcoming events, um, fifth grade now has started going to Starbase on Friday afternoons.
Mm-hmm.
And they walk down there, it's a great experience, they really enjoy that. Right, Miss Keith Faber? Yeah, they really like that a lot. Um, this week, we have our Lion King Junior auditions.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the kids are getting really excited about that, we're looking forward to a great production. And, uh, and we have No School for MLK Day on January twentieth, our pre-town meeting the twenty-first.
Mm-hmm.
And the Rutland Town Talent Show on January twenty-fourth. You make it.
Quick question, um, on the evaluations, are you guys also doing SU, um, special educators up here?
Yes, I oversee special education.
Okay, so you're, you guys are gonna be completing, I was wondering who was gonna do that, whether it was someone from central office, or one of the principals here at school, okay?
We do that.
It's really a principal.
Yeah.
You know, they're here every day.
And we do, we have to change that policy, we got enough going on right now, but that was something I was supposed to get to Chris, is that my new review policy, it turns out it wasn't technically legal, um, but anyway. It wasn't, it wasn't compliant with the Vermont statutes. And, um, so anyway, but what we have to tweak is the evaluation part of it, so that's why this is kinda, I don't know how it's getting to you, but I've repeated, I've said this before, but what was missing from that component was to come back to the school board, we hear between February, what the opinions are of the principal, the superintendent, of anybody that's leaving probationary status is gonna become permanent. And, uh, our policy that we have in the book right now is a miss, missing the evaluation process, and the statute has a requirement for the evaluations, which is really strange. So it lists them as probationary, but then it also has comments in there about the evaluations, and our policy right now does not have anything about the evaluation, so Chris needs to, the school board's attorney, amend the policy, uh, to make sure it's complying with the statute, and include in the evaluations.
I think it's in the, the supervision and evaluation handbook.
So if he can find that we tie that together.
We've looked at all those dates, and, um, those dates are complied with.
Yep, I think the dates are fine.
It's basically that you need to, you know, there's a couple of things in there, like you, if a, if a teacher's on a provisional, you have to do supervision and evaluation and observe them so many times a year. And you can't dismiss them, you know, if they're provisional, it's, they're not an automatic rehire if we recommend that they not be rehired, unless you fail to give them supervision and evaluation. And that's why we have a pretty comprehensive plan, and it follows all those dates. So it might not be in the policy, but it's in the supervision and evaluation plan that was written last year with the administrators, and I think with teacher input, too.
Yep.
So, you know, we can cross-reference that, but, and also, it's in state statute, and state tax statute trumps any policies or plans, we have to follow the statutes, which is why our plan follows it.
Sounds good to me.
Yep.
Great. Anything else? Wonderful, thank you guys. Moving on to the professional staff appointments and support staff, is that the last page we had in our...
That's the one that I handed out right here.
Yep.
It's got an extra person on it. So look at this one. There's an extra, it's, Marissa has, we added something for her.
We have two of her this year, that's fantastic.
She has, you're on the appointments twice.
I said, now we have two of you.
One is for your horizontal, zontal movement, and the other one is for tutoring.
I have to ask about the tutoring.
I can just share it with you in executive session, since it's in regards to a student matter.
Yeah, so we put this aside until after executive session.
What's that?
Put this aside until after executive session.
Absolutely, yep. We'll finish up and everything, perfect, also we'll table that, extracurricular contracts.
Well, we don't have any.
Nothing. Admin salary increase.
Uh, would that be in executive session?
No, they won't have any.
Um, I was gonna do that in executive session, if we can.
Perfect. Hey, all right, last thing. All right, we're going pretty quickly here, beautiful, so we got the, um, I'm looking for a motion tonight, it's on the purchase of the nineteen point four-two acres behind the school. Um, I discussed this over the select board, we've discussed it here, there's been members out, so I'll briefly run through it. You can take a look on MLS, uh, attached to the Grover development, there's a second phase to the Grover development that has not been started, that's up off, uh, East Pittsburgh Road. Um, there's a second phase up there that's being sold whole, meaning he will not sell a lot off that development, he wants the whole development to go, there's a price tag on it. And attached to that phase two of the development, uh, that they're looking for someone to buy, and then they can finish the phase two of the development at Grover, uh, themselves, the family's not interested in doing it, there's a nineteen point four-two acre parcel behind the school. That includes the power lines out there, there's old city water rights that are running through there. Uh, truthfully, it would, someone would have a very hard time building on it or accessing it, it has about forty or fifty feet, maybe twenty feet up on Grover. Um, so it has direct access from right behind the field here, um, and you can be in the Grover development and get road frontage on Grover, or, you know, forty feet of it. Uh, the parcel's nineteen point four-two acres. Um, the, we're looking at it for, I think, several reasons. One, field expansion, uh, we're looking at this spring, uh, Mr. Rowe, as well as the highway department, is looking at repaving at some point this summer. They're gonna use the leftover fill, uh, to both, I think, cut trees and expand our fields out. And at the end of our field, if you were to walk into the woods, probably fifty feet less, maybe more, somewhere in that neighborhood, you're gonna run into an old barbed wire fence, and, uh, the boundary line for this parcel that we're looking at, that parcel, if you look on it on a map, basically takes up the whole back of our boundary line of the school, that nineteen point four-two acres begins. Uh, included in there is a pine forest, a stream that runs through there, a wetland, it's a deer yard in the wintertime, there's always deer out there. There's a circular trail around it, Green Mountain Power's got two different accesses through there. Uh, one to drive up and down the black power line that goes to the water tower down here on Route seven. Uh, there's another one very close to that on the power line, and some cut-throughs in, or cut-throughs in there. Um, so looking at it from just a school purpose right now, it would be obviously for field expansion, to clean up that barbed wire fence on the back, uh, which has been a problem for us for years. Um, we have then the ability to open up, uh, a little more trails here to the school, that could be cross-country skiing, that could be gym class. I'm not sure of the amount of the use, uh, we also have the wetland back there for ecology, uh, in any of our science classes that we have, so this is something that I believe the townspeople are gonna use. In addition to that, uh, and I thought this was pretty neat, the, at the moment, it would allow access directly from the school, school to the Grover development, which means technically you could have kids riding bikes back to school again. We might actually have to get a bike rack out behind the school, or somewhere here, other than the broken-down one by the kindergarten that's still there. Uh, because kids may actually ride their bikes over here to school. Um, and that would be pretty neat, and, because right now, the people on that side are not gonna ride down East Pittsburgh Road, down Route seven, up Post Road, um, till they can get to the sidewalk, it's just not gonna happen, but instead, and people don't realize this, if you walk through the end of the field, and just walking pace, you'll probably be at the Grover development in about five minutes. Uh, the way this road wraps around here, the Grover development's just, uh, I don't know, maybe five, six, seven hundred yards through the woods, through the back of the field, and you come out right there. And so, that was initially, it's listed on MLS, been there for over a hundred days, seventy-five thousand dollars for the nineteen point, uh, four-two acres. It's being separated off the development. The, I went to him recently, and, uh, the realtor, and I said, we really can't negotiate the school, yada, 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 and they offered to, for the school, to drop it down, and this was the Grover family, it's in the Margaret Grover Estate, they offered to drop it down to thirty-five thousand. We, Lynn and I went over to the select board last Tuesday, uh, I believe it was Tuesday night, maybe Wednesday. Um, somewhere in there, uh, we were over at the select board to offer them the chance to obviously sponsor the purchase of the land out back in the town's name. The town was not interested in doing that, from what I can gather, but it was nice to see that they did support the school, um, picking up that property. Because there's only a few limited uses, but it could be enough, that it could be motorcycles, someone from hunting, and the truth was, that should be preserved for public use, and number two, we would need that for expansion of our fields, and we can use that. I don't think it's contributing greatly to the tax base, so it's not gonna be a major loss of this property from Rutland Town's tax base. Um, so given this chance, that we're gonna get one opportunity now to purchase it, I don't think we'll have that, uh, chance in the future. And there, a, once it's gone, and it's gonna be in someone's hands, possibly the developer, we may not have an opportunity to get that back. I think since nineteen sixty-seven till now, it's not been an option for the school to purchase. And if this, something happens in the next year or two, and the school can't purchase it, uh, then I don't think it'll probably be, I mean, it could be fifty, a hundred years before we have the opportunity to purchase it again. So right now, I have a real estate contract set up, uh, from Betsy Franzone, it's obviously unsigned, and we have a contingent upon a townwide vote on March second. Uh, Chris Leopold and Judy have worked, uh, on putting the warning and the article together for the ballot, uh, for the town voters to vote on, they're gonna vote on it separately from our budget.
So it's a separate article?
It's a separate article item, uh, it's gonna be out there that the school budget, or the school district is looking to perch, uh, purchase this nineteen point four-two acres of land for thirty-five thousand dollars plus closing costs. Um, I've also tried to write off any tax proration and get our closing costs just down to attorney's fees on this, so we can keep it within the budget, because it's kind of unknown, but I would anticipate a couple thousand dollars for attorney's fees. Um, and we're looking, uh, in talks with Louis, that we can use that surplus now to, in fact, close on this by April fifteenth, is what I have in the, uh, the, uh, the purchase and sales contract, even though the vote technically, uh, wouldn't supply the funding till after July first. Um, that we could go ahead and purchase that now, so if the voters approve it, we should be able to close on that by April fifteenth, and that would be in the contract, the only thing it's also asking for. Um, so I would ask for a motion tonight for authority to sign that contract, contingent upon voter approval, and that includes with it a payment of a five hundred dollar deposit, that if the town voters do not approve of this land purchase, we get the five hundred dollars back. But when you sign a contract with someone, you need to have a deposit, the deposit's five hundred dollars, so I'm looking for authority tonight, and, uh, first to, I guess, take motions, and a second to that, then we can have a discussion. Uh, but the approval, the authority, I think, could simply be for signing the contract, uh, for the purchase of the land, uh, out back of the school, so, do I have a motion?
Just a little bit further, when we were talking with the select board, this property, Grovers have always been the naysayers in us having a trail that go, goes up to Northwood. They didn't want anybody on their property for liability reasons, um, we've never been able to use, um, that leeway. We haven't got permission from the other landholders, not any negatives either, um, so that still is a, a possibility of use of this land. Um, and I'm, and Matt'll tell you, I'm just sitting there, I'm kinda wobbling on the fence. The thing that scares me the most is if we don't and someone does, because it's good hunting out there. Do we really want somebody to put up a camp back there, have people shooting that close to the school? Um, so yeah, that scares me, I think for safety concerns or whatever. Plus, it, it's a good thing we can move it back, and if we do get the trail and work on getting permission from landowners to let us just cut through, um, it'll actually take you all the way from Grover all the way up to Northwood.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, and that gets everybody off of Post Road, um, so I just wanted to say, that's my feeling, so I'll make that motion.
A second.
You have a second for Corinne. All right, any further discussion? Any questions from any board members?
I guess the only comments that I would make, people have been hunting on that land for years.
But now they wouldn't be able to.
Exactly.
We'll post it. It's prop, it's school property. You can't have a weapon on it.
It's a federal reg, law.
The other thing that I would say is, I know we've had lots of discussions in the past, um, and very recently even, just about repairs in the school and things that need to be done and fixed, and we don't have the money to do it. So, I just wonder, what's the best use of the money? And I'm not looking to start an hour-long debate, but?
You did.
Repair your own house, then why are you adding on to it? To spend more money on fields or to spend more money on walking trails when you can't fix leaks? Or you can't fix floor tile, or you can't fix other things? I don't necessarily know that. It's, I know it's a great deal, and I know it's one of those things that if you don't take it, you never get it back. But at the same time, it's like not fixing a leaky roof and saying, yeah, let's go on vacation. Yeah, let's.
I would agree with that. The only disagreement that I'd have, though, is that I don't think we have anything major that's not being fixed right now. And, you know, I know we have some tiling in the nurse's office, but the majority of our repairs have been, you know, performed here at the school. The maintenance is there. We're constantly working on the HVAC, but I don't see anything major going on, um, with the school. And, um, but my bigger concern outweighing that is, is that we get a chance at this, and after that, it's gone. And so, it was interesting that, uh, I had a chance to talk to someone last week, uh, that was involved with the school board up at CVU, I believe, which is the school up in Burlington. And for the last twenty or thirty years, whenever they could get their hands on property, they did. And they are very happy they did, uh, because if they didn't do it, uh, we see where Burlington is now. They would not be able to do it. They'd never get a chance. And so, there's interesting questions coming up with schools all across the state. Some of them are gonna start to, uh, come to the end of their useful life. It's gonna come on to expansions and whatnot, and the property is not there. So, do they move to another place, uh, and look for land? Um, so one of the districts up in Burlington has taken every opportunity it could to get property, uh, because it gets to the point you can get boxed in. And so, I don't think Rutland's real estate market's ever gonna turn into Burlington. Uh, but at the same time, that's definitely food for thought as to where we could go in the future. And the thing that I really liked the most about it, Russ, is that I, one of the things here at the school board, I think, it's been our job to kinda, at least the way I see it, and the reason I came in here, was to kinda set things up and then see where they go with people. I mean, we had a shed out there that wasn't being utilized. People that hadn't touched that in twenty, thirty years have been grown up. I cleaned it up, and we could actually see the building again and realize what bad repair was and was to get it moving forward. Corinne then picks up the ball, starts the ice skating rink, um, and now we have an ice skating rink up there. We got a heat pump. We got a whole shed that's been redone. Um, and one of the neat things is, we moved the baseball field. This is presenting an opportunity for someone in the future to go out there and start on a trail system. So, what may happen from it, and I told Corinne this, I said, you know, with the hockey rink out back, we may not use it for hockey. It doesn't mean it's not gonna get converted over in part, uh, in the future for cross-country skiing. And that's where they're gonna be, you know, putting skis on them, and I think it's gonna be utilized multifunctionally out there. You know, so now we're just making something available. I hope someone in the future picks up the ball and runs with it, but who knows what they may do with this property and, but if we don't take this opportunity, I don't think we'll get to it again. But it's a very good point that you do raise, and I think there's gonna be some town voters out there that wanna save the money. And, um, but I think for thirty-five thousand to let this pass by us, but I certainly, I respect that opinion. Any other questions, discussion about the land out back?
No, something else later.
And it was nice, I will say, the select board seemed rather receptive to it. I thought there may be a little less of a welcome over there. I know there was one selectman, uh, who didn't see any value in the land, um, but generally as a whole, it seemed that, you know, they were at least supportive, um, in the comments that we heard back. And, um, so anyway, any further discussion, comments, anything anyone would like to say or add? So, if I'm not mistaken, I have a motion on the floor by Lynn. I have a second by Corinne. Uh, I guess we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Am I correct? None opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
It's all up to the voters.
One of the neat things, it's up to the voters.
It's up to the voters, separate article.
It's up to the voters, and I think that's a great thing, um, and it'll be wonderful to get rid of that barbed wire fence back there, finally. It's clipping out part of our trails behind the fields and?
Got a granddaughter. It's got a few scars. Be nice to get rid of that.
Yeah, that thing's caught me a couple times over the decades.
You don't know what you got until you jump in.
Probably the current principal of the school at the time.
Caught up in the vest.
Thank you for all your work on the budget.
Thank you very much, Louis. Have a good night.
Bye, Louis.
So, we got that. Uh, new business, two things. First, ic- ice rink and storage. Ms. Rodri, do you know about that?
No.
You know anything about the ice rink? Have you heard anything about this?
No.
We're waiting for winter arrive and stay so that we can put ice down and keep it.
Yeah.
I think winter's coming this weekend, you guys.
Yeah, but it's gotta, it's gotta last a little longer than that, but yeah. I mean, that's what I keep telling the kids. I mean, when you turn around Saturday, you had sixty-five degrees. There's nothing we can do, kids.
We wasted a lot of water last week, which makes me sick. We wasted probably, like, four thousand gallons of water, if not more.
Yeah, so, I mean.
Yeah.
So, things going out there?
So, um, things are going well. I feel like I take one step forward and one step back, and I think it's been a bigger animal than what I anticipated. I keep saying I can't wait until I'm just focusing on the ice. The biggest thing has been the, um, getting the ice skates. That has been insane. Um, I got like a first order that was roughly twenty-six hundred dollars, and that was like a hundred and forty pairs of ice skates. And then I came in and I sized the middle school and didn't realize just how big the kids' feet are. I thought I'd be safe, so I, I had to purchase, like, an additional, probably twenty more pairs of skates to account for, I mean, some of them are a size twelve ice skate, pretty big.
Yeah.
And ice skates are incredibly, incredibly, incredibly expensive, especially the bigger sizes. The kind of the cheapest you can get them is a hundred dollars, and I've tried to be really, even used ice skates at that size are on average like sixty dollars.
Now, the ones with the, have children with humongous feet, I don't know where they came from, um, they have their own skates.
Yes, so we, yeah, they'll bring, they'll bring them in.
Okay, did you ask them? Okay, because I know mine just bring their own.
Yeah, we went through that. Yep, we got a checklist versus like who will bring in their own and, um, so I think we should be good. Um, we got the helmets. I need to get probably, again, ten more helmets just to account for the kids' sizes of their heads. Um, the warming hut is just about finally done. We had a heat pump and, um, Alliance had agreed to donate quite a bit of time to putting it in, and unfortunately, there was a problem with the heat pump, and the heat pump was damaged. Something happened with the heat pump, um, and it couldn't work. First, there was a piece missing, and I drove all around Rutland to get the piece, and then it, it's just, it's constantly been an undertaking. It has definitely become a part-time job. There's no doubt about it. So, I was able, GMP, um, were super great and got us a brand-new heat pump, ended up costing like fifty dollars. I do have to, um, I did have to pay somebody to put the new pump in, because we already had probably over ten hours donated to put that, to have to start back from, back from scratch. But, um, you know, the electricity is in, it's painted. We'll need to do another coat inside, outside. I called Stafford. Stafford's really interested in having the kids potentially do plumbing or build, um, some shelving or, um, storage underneath, so I spoke with them. This is, we're gonna grow it as we go. I mean, that's always kind of been the plan. I didn't wanna bite off more than I could chew. It, it's already been a tremendous undertaking. Um, but things are going well. Um, so the heat pump is in there. We will have heat. Um, the one thing I did wanna kind of bring up, and I don't know, Matt, if this is something we'll have to put on the agenda and actually, like, vote on it, but we did get a separate bill from GMP that was labeled Ice Rink, and I wasn't exactly sure what that was, so I called and spoke, um, with GMP today. So, all along, we've been paying for the two lights out there. One was working and one had been, they just kinda used the language vandalized. It was like smashed and, and not working essentially, but we still had been paying for both of those lights. So, they just came at no charge and switched out those lights and put in like a new, more energy-efficient, brighter, kinda cheaper-to-run light. So, that kind of was in the wash with what we already had. But the separate bill is for the, and it's roughly fifteen bucks a month. It's for the actual meter to run the power to the, um, warming hut. So, we could keep it separate on the ice, ice rink, and we could pay that, you know, fifteen dollars and take it out of the account and run that thing, you know, November to March, and then shut it down, and there would be, you know, no power at all, um, you know, on that warming hut, or if it wanted to be something of the school's and be multipurpose and run that thing year-round. I mean, there's a ton of outlets in there. There's a ton of lighting. I don't know if people wanted to use it for soccer and, you know, hook up speakers or music or whatever. I mean, it's, there's a lot of space in there, so that would be the discussion.
I have to ask, because we have power in there, we have heat in there.
Mm-hmm.
What do we have the door? I mean, is there a locking door? Because we have a transient population that is pretty large, and they are in the town too.
Yes.
Um, I could just see somebody making that their little house.
We talked about that. Yeah, we do have a lock, and we're gonna, now that the heat pump, the heat pump just got put in on Saturday, so we're gonna put a lock on it. In the school, there's a lock, I believe. Ryan, there's a lock somewhere. We're gonna lock it. Um, probably something over the summer. We're gonna have it painted again, the outside and the inside. It needs additional. We just ran out of warm weather, um, to finish the job. It got way too cold and the paint wasn't cooperating. Um, we're gonna need to put better doors on there. Those doors are kind of temporary. Um, you know, um, GE did a great job. They donated a lot of time. They kind of got us started. The roof is holding up, I think, very nicely, um, but there'll be some, a few things we're gonna have to work on this summer. The doors being, being one of them.
I would say leave it separate for this one reason. Um, if we have usage, we just won't disconnect it. If we don't have usage in the summer, whatever, we can shut it, plus we can keep an eye on it. Um, a lot of times what happens here, like, the bill we paid for, I don't know how many years with the city with water for a fire, um, system that we never even had, this way we can keep an eye on it to make sure that it's, you know. Um, but I have no problem. I mean, if there's a usage for it, fifteen a month is no big deal, but if there's not?
Yeah, I definitely, I would turn it off. I mean, if it's not gonna be used, I wouldn't wanna pay it out of the rink's account all year long.
I mean, fifteen a month, I can understand the school board taking on that fifteen dollars a month.
Yeah.
I can, and we can probably keep a better eye on that, but, um, I mean, that's very little, I think, for the school to take on.
So, that was the only thing I wanted to mention.
I agree a hundred percent on that.
Yeah, so that's it. So, hopefully, um, it looks cold then this week and on next week. I think we're gonna finally get into. Um, the fire department came up last week, the, the Rutland Town Fire Department. They were great. They helped one night. Something we're gonna have to do to figure out is the, the water system. The water's not ideal with the, using the hydrant. There used to be a spigot right next to the warming hut, and when, a couple of years ago, when they did the work with the culvert, like, no, I mean, it hadn't been used. It wasn't his fault. It was twenty-five years, so they kind of cut it. So, now the only way we can really access the water is from the hydrant, which is a bit far. And the problem, what happened to us last week, is it ended up, um, freezing, 'cause even when you shut it off?
The hydrant?
The hydrant, it's still, um, like, the water will kind of drip and run a little bit, and it ended up freezing the hydrant. So, that's a little bit of a problem, so I'm gonna have, you know, we'd have to figure out probably a better water system of getting you some, seeing if we can get that little spigot. I don't even know if it's possible, but.
And so, the other thing I wanted to bring up, you and I had chatted about the other day, is that we are still taking donations here then for the ice skating rink. We still need a lot of help for the ice skating rink, and then we're looking at, and, you know, again, kind of what I just said when you were outside of the room, is that, you know, we kind of set things up here and you never know who's gonna run with it. And so, it looks like, you know, in January and February, it would be nice to bring someone in for those two months and pay them out of the fund to cover, uh, hosing down the rink, you know, taking care of everything from scraping it. I mean, you're gonna have help from kids here and there, but?
Exactly.
To get someone in there, uh, for those two months to help straighten that out, to run the room, to open the place up, to? Um, so it'd be nice to have a manager and have someone that we can compensate, you know, a thousand or two thousand dollars a year to help straighten out the rink.
Slap you.
Yeah, that's what they do at Procter. That's exactly, I mean, they have two, they pay really three people to run it, but again, there's this more of a community thing on the weekends, but I definitely think we need, like, more manpower with the helping of the freezing. I mean, even like last week, those three days, it's, it's like a lot.
Yeah, that's gonna be a lot of work. And we also need crates for that, correct? We also need milk crates for the kids.
I'm working on that, yeah. I, Thomas.
Anybody has any connections?
There's something else too, that somebody was talking about, something else that you can push on for kids.
Like fifty dollars. I've already looked into it, yeah.
Things. Did I send that to you?
It's easier just to give milk crates and two or three, and the kids go with the milk crate. A lot cheaper, and that's what we do at Spartan. The way we did it at Raha years and years ago.
I'm working on that. My next, I already went to Thomas Derry, um, like, two months ago and asked them to donate, but they will not donate milk crates.
I wonder if Stewart's has any leftovers?
Yeah, so that, I have Stewart's. Um, that's also on my list. I have to finish getting up the skates, the, getting the crate. Oh, and something else we purchased, which we, um, would absolutely need is a skate sharpener, um, because there's no way those things are gonna have to be sharpened, and it's five dollars, like, a sharpen. And there's no way, I mean, we're gonna have like a hundred and fifty. I mean, the logistics of taking every skate and driving to Spartan or to Replay is not even?
And it's more, they pay big money. I think Anna's were like thirty, thirty-five dollars the other day to get sharpened at Replay. Um, yeah, but you have to have somebody that knows what they're doing.
Knows how to sharpen hockey skates. I've had mine sharpened the wrong way. That ruins your blades. Yes.
This one that I got, I did a lot of research and I spoke to a lot of the hockey parents. This one's a very, I, we already bought it. It's in the school.
Okay.
It was cheap. It's already here. I got it like six weeks ago. Very, very user-friendly. It's kind of what people have in their home. That's very, very easy. It's not, and Procter has a very similar one. They have the same thing at the Procter rink. Yep. So, that's it. We're getting there.
Thank you.
We think, anyway, till we find the next issue.
Thank you, Tony. Tony, Tony even. Tony even.
Well, thank you for all your hard work. Yes, thank you very much.
Yep.
Yeah, that is great. So, co-curricular recommendation. Did we have a recommendation from the committee or are we discussing that tonight?
I think we're gonna table it, 'cause it, they, I, we have to touch base once more with Corey Valley to confirm, because they were making some little changes, so we'll bring it next time.
Trying to be in coordination with everybody else so that we were consistent.
Yeah, that was a big thing that we had had in the past. We weren't consistent. And they, they're, they were just completing theirs today.
I did want to mention that, um, you know, we've been working on the, the heating, and Ryan's been working with Alliance on that. And one of the things that we found out when we had the, our heating issue that day was that, uh, we were having trouble getting the oil from the tank up to the boilers, so?
What changed? We've never had any problem before.
I don't know. I don't know. Um, there's a couple of different ways to go about, um, fixing it. One is adding something called a jockey pump, which is pretty expensive. Um, that's about seven thousand dollars to do that. Um, there's another way that's less expensive. Um, that's probably might be about fifteen hundred dollars. Ryan's concerned that that won't really solve the problem, so we're kind of looking into both of those things, and we'll get back to you when we figure out what the best course of action might be on that. In terms of air, I just wanted you to know that one of the things that Brian did over the weekend, now that we're into flu season and things like that, um, on Saturday, when no one was in the building, he controlled all the air in the building remotely to totally flush the air out of the building and replace it with new, so that we kind of flush all the germs out of the building while nobody's here. So, that's kind of a, a nice thing that we can do now that we have the controls. Um, so we talked about that ahead of time. We knew it was gonna be warm. We said, let's just do it, and, uh, so hopefully that'll help us with our health within the building, so.
That's fantastic.
It's a great thing.
Under new business, could I bring up one thing? And, and it's been probably twenty years that I've been trying to do it. Last year, the town police department did it. The fire, rec, all of them have a depreciation. Last year, the town police department did it. The fire, rec, all of them have a depreciation fund where they get so much out of the tax money that comes in, it goes directly into a fund. Um, we really, in the past, we've always had opportunities or ended up with, oh, excess monies that we could place money into our capital fund. Nothing has been really put into that for the last five years, at least. Um, and I'm just wondering if we shouldn't try a separate article, like the town did, for the police department last year, and their, um, their wording is right here, and what it is, is they got, uh...
That was for the...
...by taxes to raise at the rate of point zero zero two five per one hundred of assessed property valuation. And I'm just thinking, it's not gonna bring in a lot of money. They did it to basically, to help pay for their cruisers when they need a new cruiser, or whatever. Um, if that goes directly into our capital depreciation fund, we have the money to do our major projects instead of asking. So they hurt a little bit now, but when it comes time to do a project, we'll have money to ask them to let us take. I just, I just think it, it's a no-brainer to throw it on and see what the people think, because, I mean, in the past, when we do these projects, we have to ask them, and we have to go out to get a bond and this and that.
Steal out of the surplus to pay for it if we need it, and then...
Right, and, and this way, I think it would hurt a lot less.
Yep, and we have one right now set up for, the town has one set up for the pool. We didn't wanna be like Rutland City and get stuck with a multimillion-dollar project on our hands.
All their departments have them. The highway has them.
Last year was the backpacks and the whatever packs they're using, because they have to be updated every so year, so often, so those were in there.
When they buy a new fire truck, majority of it is taken out of there. I mean, they're a lot bigger percentage coming out, but, um, I just figure...
Do we dare do that now, and do we have a number?
Well, if we use the one that, like, they came from last year with the police department.
Well, I just did it real rough. Based on that, Louis told us that that thirty-five thousand dollars, at one penny on the tax rate, would raise, what, I mean, that, that's about thirty-five thousand. So if you did a quarter, it would be about eighty-six hundred?
No, it's more than that. It's, they're getting twenty or thirty thousand.
Yeah, but, but, oh, but is your school rate and your tax rate slightly different?
No, it's the same. Tax rate is one thing.
On the employees.
Okay, well, I just did that really rough, so I was just guessing.
So, right.
Well, the other municipal rate where they're at, then we have this, the education spending rate, which is, we're on the education, they're on the municipals, so I don't know what they're doing.
I would have to ask Louis. I was just trying to...
You could ask Louis and, and whatever, but, um, yeah, just, yeah.
Well, if you want it on the article, you need to, you know, tell me to do it, and I'll put it on.
Might get a question. I wanna, if we can just, we'll do a quick weather report. So, Tim, do you think we should do this fund to set up for capital repairs? And yes, what would you like to see go into the fund, um, each year? So if it's no, it's a no, and if it's a yes, what amount would you like to see? What amount would you like to see go into the fund that we'd make a request to voters and put it on the ballot this year?
Um, I don't know. Let me, I'd hear what...
Right, Lynn? So that was a yes, though, on an unknown amount, right?
Yeah, I think it's a good concept.
Right, right.
Lynn, so you're making...
I would say twenty, twenty-five thousand. That way it's not so big that the townspeople worry. Um, and also to remember that we can't take it out of capital expenditure until this town says we can, so we can't just grab it.
Yeah. Now, with, with, how does that function? So we can't take it out until we...
We go to the voters for, and ask them. They've never turned us down, but ask them to take, say we have a hundred thousand in there. May we take fifty thousand of that to put for this project?
For approval to start putting in, and then we have to wait until town meeting day to ask them to take it.
Or we have a special election. If something catastrophic happened, we just have a special election. Um, and, I mean, they have never said no to anything. Um, you know, it's just checks and balances. I don't know how the rest of the towns...
What's it, Captain? Just a general...
We have a capital expense fund. Um, I don't know how much is in there now, eight, nine thousand, not much. Um, eight or nine thousand. I don't think there's much more than that, is there, Matt?
And it just sits in a general bank account.
It sits there raising, yeah, until we need it.
What are your thoughts, Corinne?
Yeah, no, I think it's a good idea.
Amount?
I don't know the exact amount, but I would, I mean, something that's not...
Well, I'm thinking if we're gonna ask them, we, yeah, I would think twenty, twenty-five thousand, so that you have at least a couple of years to get some money.
Yeah.
We, we want them to say yes, Russ.
Right.
Russ, what are you thinking? Okay, so the, I'm gonna be the only one that would say no to this, and the only reason I would say no to this is that, A, it's the wrong year to do it. Um, never during an election year should you ask to add more money, uh, because this is the year where budgets are most likely to be shot down, uh, because there's so much rhetoric out there from the politicians about cutting back and taxes. Um, so you never look for any capital improvements or projects. You generally try to the every other year, and it's not during the presidential election cycle, 'cause there's so much about peeling back the tax money and other people spending our cash out there, so it's a bad year. The other reason that I just don't want to right now is, two, it's kind of self-interested. I don't want it interfering with the land this year that's gonna be out there. Um, but number three, and the other issue is, is that we have Chaney Hill School, which is gonna be, when it sells, uh, putting almost, somewhere, I'm guessing, I think the asking price is around a hundred thousand out there, so when that does go, and whether we decide to do a price drop on it, but that should likely come, and I could see some people asking us some questions like, "Wait a minute, aren't you selling Chaney Hill School now, too?" So there's gonna be a slug of cash coming in there, and that's gonna be upwards of a hundred thousand dollars.
We can earmark that for the capital.
Yep, well, that's gonna come in and then we earmark it, so my thought would just be, I'm completely supportive of it, but just to put it on next election cycle and knowing that Chaney Hill's coming through here.
And that's fine. Like I said, I've waited over twenty years. I can wait another year.
I am, but anyway, I'm fully supportive of it.
What's one more year?
I was warned about the voters on these years, and that whenever the school budget has gone down, it's been on these years typically that it, uh, gets shot down, not on the others. Um, it's when the voters are getting brought out in numbers, and so, anyway, uh, I would be the only one that would vote no. But anyway, uh, why don't we go ahead and we'll take a motion, see where we go. The, you wanna make a motion, formal? Make a motion for a capital reserve fund, uh, what amount?
I know what you're saying. I'm just debating with myself. Um...
It has to be warned prior to how, it has to be decided right now.
I would have to put it on the warning, and you'd have to talk about it at the pre-town meeting and, and the town meeting. But I just need to know, 'cause I've gotta get that warning prepared for next week.
I just don't know if we have a firm enough thought to...
Yeah, I said, wait, I, I'm not gonna make the motion. I'll shut them now.
Okay. Well, that makes sense. I think, well, if someone else, anybody else wanna make the motion, or...
It is a great concept, and I've seen many...
Not right now. I mean, if I had a, right, but I thought maybe we'd get a start on it. But we can take the Chaney Hill money and ask them next year to put that into our capital expense, and then, well, geez, you know, we wouldn't have to do this if you gave us, oh, so...
So, so little amount of money.
It is. It, it sounds, especially on an eight million.
We held a hundred thousand dollars on an eight million dollar budget. I mean, it's like a five-dollar bill.
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not a lot, it's not a lot of money.
What is going on with Chaney Hill? Is it like on the market?
He got a couple...
It's on the market. We got Betsy Franzeni, uh, who's the realtor. She's the same one that has the property listed behind the school, too, for the Grover Estate, and, uh, I know she's shown it two times in the last three, three weeks, um, but that's it. I haven't heard of anything terribly serious, and that's where we are right now.
Did we get the finalized reports on the soil sample and all that?
My understanding is it's done.
It's done. It came back and nobody, nobody told us about it. That was before you, so don't look at me like that.
We don't have, we don't have the results.
No, all, all the work that, I do know this from Louis, and because we had to give it to Betsy Franzeni, is all the work was done on it, you know, it's clean, it's, everything that needed to be done was done, and we had to give her all the paperwork as the realtor.
Right, and everything passed, yep.
Yeah.
But we weren't given that. I don't know what was going on at the time, but we weren't given the final results, but they're all good and all that.
I know it's all good, because that's part of, you know, if you put something on the market.
Yep, no.
Yes.
And I was asked to fire the building back up, and we'll come back to the school board, um, as necessary, but I was asked to fire the building back up. And my response to that was, is that in the school, in Chaney Hill, we have antifreeze in the heating lines, my understanding. So if they wanted to see the boiler start and the furnace, they could run that. I believe there's a new bouderes over there in that building, um, from the visit that I was over there. There is new plumbing, there is a new furnace over there. Uh, but at the same time, unless they were extremely serious, I did not want the water filled back into the toilets, because that was the one thing that would then have to be, we were, we re-winterized again and taken back out of the toilets, 'cause we can turn on the heat anytime and run it with the antifreeze from the RVs and the lines and run the heat. Uh, but to, to go and fill all the toilets and the water back and the water lines to the sinks, um, unless they were serious, and I did not hear back. So, but I would report that back to the board, but that person was...
I mean, they always have the option to say that the furnace has to work, no problem.
Yep, and the conversions that I've seen, it looks like the, people are either gonna try and use it as a daycare, but not even that. It looks like where people are looking for is to rehab the, uh, the facility into a house and convert it to residential real estate again, and that they could, you know, got it typically, typically make a few bedrooms and then make a house out of it. And so that appears to be the direction. It's gonna be the best use, and that's interesting. I think that's what the appraiser had suggested. It was gonna be a commercial use, like maybe a daycare.
If I had the money, that's what I'd use for it.
Maybe a daycare, or someone's gonna buy a cheap and convert a house if you're, you know, it's just you and a house. It's just one person, and you're in a house, and you need a place, and you're between here and especially Florida, that'd be a great place to rehab real quick for a single person, two people to be in that house, so we'll see what happens. So, I guess that still remains to be seen. It's a mystery, yeah. It's a mystery. So, uh, next meeting we have set up is the January twenty-first, two thousand twenty, pre-town meeting.
Now, what time do you wanna get here?
The, um, what do we wanna do? Yeah, that is a good question. We used to meet beforehand. I don't see any reason to do that.
Unless Louis comes up and says there's a big difference in the budget, I don't see why. I mean...
My thought is, let's put it down at seven o'clock, and we can get here at seven. I'm gonna watch the town.
I wrote down seven o'clock. We'll warn it for seven, and then say immediately following.
Right here.
It's right here in the gym.
Yep.
It's right here in the gym.
At seven PM.
Yep, and, excuse me, cafeteria. Uh, yeah, it's always in the cafeteria.
Cafeteria, right, right.
So, seven o'clock will be the town's presentation, and we go on after the town, so the truth is...
You're here by seven-thirty?
If you did it seven-thirty there, I'll probably be here at seven and a little before, just to see the town open up, and the town...
I think last year they were quicker than normal.
Town was fast last year. They have moved. Instead of sitting there and reading everything kind of the way I've streamlined it, they did the exact same thing on the town side, and they were done, I wanna say, in a half an hour. They kind of scooted around to a few different departments. Um, so I would say if anyone does come late, don't push it past seven-thirty, 'cause we don't know when these guys are gonna finish, and, and we'll do that. But, yeah, if we can keep it to a minimum PowerPoint, I'd like to skip, you wanna throw one?
No, it's whatever you want.
Well, how about we share it with the board?
Yeah.
What?
The PowerPoint.
Yeah, whatever. I mean, usually it just runs in the background. I never pay attention to it.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter. If you put it on the website or whatever, that's fine, too.
Yeah, we'll just share it with you.
We could just do something in the background, just a great picture.
That's what I thought, just some kid pictures in the background.
I think that would be really nice.
I'm up there, yeah.
Just put him on, yeah, just put it in the background.
Yep.
Just turn it on.
It's like the ultimate distraction. You guys are trying to sabotage us.
No, we don't. If we want, no, then we'll...
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. No, I flipped through a couple times where I wanted some numbers, I pulled them, but that was...
Yeah, well, we don't, you tell us what you want. We don't have to.
Okay, I make a motion, we'll go in executive session for personnel.
So it's gonna be personnel, um, salary, um...
Personnel.
Trying to move it along.
Oh, and student matters, um, and...
Per topic.
That's it.
I don't know, please, good enough for me. All right, so you've made a motion seconded by who? Tim? We got you in there today. Tim's got a second. We need him on the paper.
It does matter, because he never talks, so...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.